Did you see the email that says that people are not talking into their microphones, Dan?
I never heard.
I can, I can pull it up on my.
I know that I got some emails that we didn't even record a couple of meetings.
Welcome, everyone. Please make sure your cell phones are turned off from muted and move stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Sean.
Here. Any reason for any of the commission members to?
Wanda.
Mine's on.
Sean has got his on.
Second from the, there you go.
Any reason for any members of the commission to abstain from?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Mr. Chair, let's add the transit.
At two thirty?
And we also need to add the horn law office.
What, what is that going to be concerning?
About the contract.
About the public defender contract.
Yeah, I'm fine. Where do you want to add that one?
Well, right after the transit's fine.
Two forty? Well, are they, are they here? Though we have people waiting.
I told him to come at two twenty.
Okay.
Well, we can do the, whoever's here, we can go whatever order. I don't care, but I would move to approve the amended agenda.
The motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the agenda, amended agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now be the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual, or organization. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comment? Seeing or hearing none, public comment is closed. Moving on, Crystal for the Historical Society.
So assume you want this on, huh?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
What's that, okay. Sorry I couldn't make it or stay for the last time. You guys had me on the schedule, so I had a personal emergency I had to get to, but. Thanks for taking your time to let me talk to you guys about my budget request for next year. I, because I didn't know how much Ryan knew about us, I kind of had planned to talk about who we are and what we do, so maybe just for a statement of fact, I'll just cover that and then I'll explain my budget request. So the Yankton County Historical Society provides an authentic historic experience, Yankton County area, from pre-Dakota territory to the modern era. Our move to the MEAT in 2018, our annual visitation has grown every year, and last year was our best year yet. We had over seven thousand five hundred people. And we do keep track month to month, and so far this year in 2024, every month has had at least fifty to a hundred more people per month. So we are still seeing an increase in popularity as people get aware of us. And so as many visitors have been in, have been in all of what we've done at the MEAT, many are wondering where the artifacts are from the old location. I get that request a lot. There's two kinds of visitors that walk in the door, at least those that have any knowledge of what they're walking into anyway. Some people just simply, now we have a sign on the highway, so now they just come in because they saw a sign, but, you know, they're asking, well, where's the stuff from the old location at West Side Park? Or they're coming in going, well, I was expecting to learn about Yankton Capitol Dakota Territory, Yankton County history, and we don't currently have a permanent gallery on that. We do change in exhibits where we feature little pieces, but nothing permanent. So the MEAT was actually more than just a renovation of a historic building. It was about the preservation, professional preservation of over forty-five thousand historic artifacts related to Yankton and Yankton County. So the MEAT has given us opportunity to help the community residents find a sense of belonging, inspiring new ideas in generations, and positive growth. So we do this when we use those tangible artifacts. It's so much more than just telling a story, to have an artifact to go with it. That being said, in 2023, we had a loss of three FTEs. We lost a full-time facility, a full-time marketing, and a full-time programming coordinator position. One of those for sure was simply because we couldn't afford to pay them to keep them. And so what we did, and because professional wages have jumped so much in the last couple of years, the organization was already underpaying their staff and didn't have any benefits. So we pulled way back in 2024, and we've only refilled a marketing position for ten hours a week, a part-time facility, and we have not refilled the, the programming. We only did over the summer months of May, June, July, and August, and not even all of those, about three months. She's going to leave again and go back to teaching, and we're not going to refill that position. But in 2025, I do want to get a full-time programming coordinator back. With pulling back on the operations, we have been able to maintain and sustain what we're doing. But as I was talking about, people looking for those artifacts, we have two permanent galleries that we want to install. One is called the Dakota Story, and it's on the history of Yankton as Capitol Dakota Territory through to Gavin's Point Dam. The other one is A Great Dakota Boom, and it's all about the Yankton County history of the immigrant experience. So those are together five thousand square foot exhibits. Because I'm doing programming, and my staff of three and a bunch of other part-times, we're maintaining, but I can't put the time and effort into writing those exhibit panels because I don't have enough time in the day. So by getting back our programming coordinator position, we hope next year we can put a little more efforts to getting those exhibits finished. So we're not going to refill all three of those positions, not right away. We need to ease back into it. For us, it's been a kind of a double-edged sword. It's, those exhibits will bring people to our facility because it will be a destination museum. They will come to us on purpose. They're already coming to us on purpose for Hall of Trees. Half of the thirty-five hundred people who came for Hall of Trees last year in one month came because we had the trees. They came for our event. So we want our exhibits to do the same thing, so. That's why I have a little bit of an increase in my request to help us put back into that programming coordinator position. Of course, we'll find funding in some of the other areas because twenty thousand dollars isn't going to be enough to pay her or him, so. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at with that and why I was asking for just a little increase so we could try to get back to where we can grow and, and finish what we started.
Okay. Any questions for?
You do a great job, Crystal, like I said, the rep on the, on the board, and money's, money's tight, but does a good job representing our past and our history, so thank you.
Thanks. My team works hard, so I appreciate though everything you guys have done for us and your ongoing support, so. We're good?
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chair, do you want to do the transit next to get that lady out of here?
Well, since she's here, I don't care. Ryan, I'm sure, I'm sure the record should reflect that Commissioner Heiney has arrived.
Yep.
Sorry for being late.
So next on the agenda is Will Kennedy. Make sure the mic's on.
I look better with it. There we go. Didn't think I sounded right. Okay, so I've got ten minutes to keep on schedule.
Sounds that way, yeah.
All right. I'm Will Kennedy with Pathways. I took over for the, the legend himself, Jesse Bailey, about ninety days ago. He told me that we had to come talk to the commissioners and, and request some funding. We did that. I did send in some packets with some different statistics on there. Just to let you guys know, my background is not in human services.
Yes, sir.
Yep, and that's just a, a small screenshot of what we do, but I came in, the board was looking for somebody to do some development and some restructuring and things like that. And just to let you know what's going on at Pathways, we're still serving everybody. We're still overfull. We still have a mission that's worth doing. But we are looking at shrinking our footprint a little bit and just being really, really good at the areas that we are going to do going forward. So we're moving some staff around. We're going to get away from just being a, a roof to sleep under for our participants. We're going to focus on intensive case management. We're going to focus on getting these people housed. We're going to focus on life skills, things like that. What I found when I came in is we were stretched to the point that we were treading water but not getting ahead. We weren't doing these individuals any good. We'd see the same families, the same individuals over and over again. And from what I'm hearing, the Yankton community wants, we weren't fitting the bill on that. We're doing great work, but we're doing all the same people over and over again. So one thing I did want to talk about is what homelessness looks like in Yankton. I'm a little tall for your mic here. Homelessness, I'm finding when I come in, is not necessarily what we see it as stereotypically, and that blew my mind coming in. A huge percentage of our participants are employed, but you simply can't find housing in Yankton, as I'm sure you all know. We, we have a waitlist to get into the shelter that's capped at sixteen families, and it has been full since I got here. Many of those families are working.
You can step back just a little bit.
Is that helping?
You bet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So a lot of our families that are at the shelter, we don't think of families being homeless, right? We think of the individual under the bridge, that old stereotype. Sixteen families on our waiting list right now to get into the shelter, nine rooms full of families. We have eighty-six children that we've served so far this year. So if you want to think about what Yankton really looks like as far as homelessness, that's what it is. Most of these participants are working, but they simply don't have the money, the capacity, the background to be successful in renting.
What is, what does that mean, like past evictions and things like that?
Past evictions or the jobs simply aren't paying enough to raise a family of four and, and be able to find housing, things like that. We actually have some funding in place right now for our youth house, our youth transitional programming, and when we say youth, that's eighteen to twenty-four. We have funding in place for that, that we could get every youth on our roster into someplace through federal grants. There's no place for them to go. There, there's literally no place for these youth to go because there's just no openings. That's one thing to think about, and I know we did ask for a little bit more money this year, but we've got to move over to this intensive case management because we've got to get our participants, number one, in our system, get them settled so they have someplace safe to be. Teach them the life skills they need, get them housed, and keep them there. The other thing I'm really working on as a new director is just our staffing, keeping our staff safe, keeping our policies. The lady that went before me kind of stole my speech a little bit. Everything's gotten so much more expensive. We're trying to pay people so we can keep them, and we also, if you look at the sheet I gave you, that talks about Tier Two, which is our long-term shelter, the old hotel. We also have night-by-night, which is in the basement, and those ladies and gentlemen can come and shower, get a meal, stay overnight, and then they leave in the morning.
What, what percentage of those night-by-night people are actually from Yankton?
We run just below eighty percent in all our programs.
And what, but how do you verify that? Does just somebody show up and say, I'm from Yankton, or how, how do you know that that's the case?
We try and get identification on as many as we can. Our second largest category staying in night-by-night is unidentified or will not answer.
Okay, and, and you know, see, you know, I, I support Pathways. I think it's a good program, but I am concerned, and I've heard a lot of concern from the community of all the homeless people down at the park. I just talked to a guy down there that can't take his kids down there anymore because of the bathrooms are in, in, in trouble, and I just, I guess, are we importing homeless from other communities?
No, we're not a relocation program. We don't go looking for people. We don't give bus tickets to get here. I've heard that too since I started.
I've, I've talked to some of the people from the sheriff's office, who talked to some people from Louisiana who came up here because our benefits are so generous, and that's, that's what I heard from our sheriff's office.
I'd wonder what benefits those are. We give them two sandwiches and a shower. I don't think that's anything to move up here for, but I know, I know that's going around.
Yeah, I just, I just have a hard time to believe that there's, there's that many, and it says in here that we're a sixty-mile radius. So that's Sioux City. It's pretty close to Sioux Falls, and then out past Wagner, and, and this is the location that they come to?
This is the only location available.
But I guess my concern is us as the county, you know, and as, as a private individual, yes, I think it's a great thing. I've donated to Pathways in the past. But I don't think what you understand is when we bring in individuals here and they get into legal trouble, we have to pay to defend them. We have to pay to prosecute them, pay to put them in our, our jail. We've all seen that skyrocket. Our deputy state's attorney, Deb Lilly, has had an article about it. When it doesn't, when the shelter doesn't work out, it's the Yankton County that has to pay additional for that, and I just, I think it's concerning. I mean, are you guys still continuing to expand? I mean, how mu- how many properties do you have now?
We have the shelter, and then we have the one property right across the street with the youth house that's federally funded behind it. The, actually, the property across the street is just offices. We have two, two properties that do that. I, I agree with you a hundred percent about people coming in and things like that. I guess my answer is, you know, look at the statistics. I get it all, and I, I just don't know what we do otherwise. You know, we all want to help the homeless, and I've said this to our neighbor, said, I get you. I, I get you have trouble with this. We all want to help the homeless, but we don't want them in our backyard. For my first day of work, there, our neighbor kind of didn't get after me, but he let his opinion be known, and I said, let me know what to do. We'll, we'll do our best, and we've really worked on keeping people off his property and all those things. I, I will tell you, if I didn't believe this, I wouldn't say it. I think the hype about people coming in from states away for Pathways is massively overdone.
Well, what percentage are from another state, would you say?
Well, we have seventy-eight from Clay, from Yankton County, so the max that would be from another state would be twelve.
Who say, who say they're from Yankton County?
I'm sorry, what was your question, Dan?
No, I, I was just, I'm just trying to find out how many are actually from the area, so.
And we do, we do get a high percentage of tribal members from, from outside of Yankton's borders, too. And the hard part with the transient community is, where are they really from? You know, that makes it tough. I'm not trying to defend it. I'm just telling my, I, I get it. It's a problem.
I understand, you know, but our position is too, is, you know, we, we have very limited funding in the county, and if we're importing a highly dependent population that, you know, if they get sick and they go to the hospital, then, you know, we have indigent medical, we have indigent legal, we have all these fees. Not very many months ago, we wrote, had to write a hundred and ninety thousand dollar check to the hospital for indigent medical. So it's not, yes, we want to help these people, but what happens when, you know, they fail out of your program and they're a resident?
All, I, and the simple answer to that is, I don't have an answer for that. I can do, I can do what I can when they're there, and hopefully if we get them case managed a little better, they, they learn. And again, I, I understand that people, if it's a sixty-mile radius, we're also the only game in town, right? We're the only place for these people to go that they can be safe. But, but I, I would, I would say we are not importing people. People are coming, but we're not importing them, and I think there's a difference there.
Do you, do you check status, like if, are they all American citizens, or do you, does that, do you check that?
I would have to look at that. I would assume we do, but we do have people come in that are non-English speaking and things like that. That is a good question, and like I said, I'm, I'm new. We're at it. I'll look into it.
And, you know, and that's another, you know, concern as well that I, I guess.
But, I mean, we're also not, not immigration or anything like that, so.
I have a question. Do you folks provide housing for trustees?
We have a.
Or people who are getting out?
We have a CTP program. Thank you for answering. It's Community Transition Program. It's a contract with the state of South Dakota, and they are contracted for two rooms that we have, multiple occupancies. And they come to us, they get case management. They have to abide by a very strict set of rules, and we have been, I like the program because honestly, the CTP guys are some of the easier participants because.
They want to stay out.
They do not want to go back, and the one thing I learned about that is when I started in April, South Dakota's penitentiaries have a waitlist that went all the way back to December for those guys that could have been released in December and had nowhere to go, so they're still sitting in the penitentiary, waiting to get out. And I don't think anything good probably happens in the penitentiary when you're just hanging out in there. So, yeah, I mean, we, the more we can get them housed, it's going to save, not you guys directly, money, but the state money.
As I recall, as I recall, when Jesse spoke to us last, he did, he did indicate that your success ratio.
Your success ratio of transitioning people to jobs and to places to live. Uh, was fairly high?
We do fairly well. The employers in town actually like us. I actually talked with, um, the construction company out here that's doing the dirt work on eighty-one, the Wises. They had some job openings, I contacted them and heard back from them yesterday and they said, we will be the first people they check with for labor jobs going forward. Because they're looking all the time at the start of the season. So we're first on their list. Uh, we seem to have good relations with the employers.
Was that percentage like in the sixty or seventy percent?
I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. Again, I, I'm new and I'm learning the ropes as I go. I, I don't want to say a wrong number.
Which I would think would be exceptionally good if it was that high.
Yes, I can tell you, we just started two people at Hy-Vee, um, our youth program. We just got an eighteen-year-old young lady with no family. She lives in our youth house. She just graduated from high school with great grades and the only people that were there to clap for her was our staff. So our staff's doing a great job and she just started at Hy-Vee too. We're proud of her, we think she's pretty cool to get her through that. It's, and I want to say again, the gentleman in the court, I get it. That, that's my whole deal is I'm not trying to get away from any of this. I just want to do the best job we can for Yankton and get these people housed to give them some, you know, if nothing else, give them some dignity.
Is there any, uh, is there any, uh, plans for further expansion or you're going to just try to manage?
There were, there were plans for further expansion and then COVID came along and then COVID money went away. My whole deal since I got here with the support of the board is no, we're going to do what we're going to do. We're going to do what we have now, we're going to get real good at it so we don't have to come back and ask for money all the time. Once our restructure is done, I hope and pray that it gets me back to where I'm out in the community raising money. So I don't have to come up here and bug you guys for it anymore. That's, that's part of the plan, it hasn't happened yet because it's been hectic. Um, but fingers crossed.
So what is the dollar amount that you're requesting?
I believe we had twenty thousand on up there from ten thousand. And that would be, that would be directed towards salaries because most of the time grants don't cover those. And I've got to keep good people in there if I'm going to keep good case management.
Well, I think this is a case of, you know, if you build it, they, they will come. And if we had a thousand beds, it would probably be filled up, uh, in a couple of months. And, you know, I, I think this is a, a good program, but I just think we've got to be real concerned that we're. When we're bringing in everybody from sixty miles around, then we're spending Yankton County tax dollars on people from other areas. And I just don't, I don't think that's fair. I mean, maybe you'd be better off go branching if, if you're getting so many tribal people, go to Wagner and those areas. And start up a smaller, uh, shelter. And that way those people would stay in their own communities where they have family and friends rather than moving them across the state.
Well, you would think that the tribe would take some.
I, I would think.
Accountability for their tribal members and house them rather than sending them here. However, from what I hear, um, the situation on the reservation is not good. Which I can understand why some of those people leave. But conversely, the other side, I understand if you build them, they will come because I agree with that. But what I'm hearing him say is not that we're building anymore, that we're going to hire people to maybe make these people. Workforce people. Because God knows, Yankton is short of workers.
And, and that's, that's where I'm a little different than my, my coworkers is I don't have the human services background. I worked for the scouts before this and this was all about teaching skills and self-sufficiency. And that's where I want to see it go because we have to. We've got to turn out workers. We're changing our policies, our recidivism policy is if we, we've changed it to where if we house you and it fails because of your actions. We don't house you again. Because we've got a list of sixteen households with children waiting for us to help them. And we just have to help those that are helping themselves. It's an, it's an ugly situation. I didn't think it'd ever be a homeless shelter director, executive director, whatever I am, but here we are and we're going to make it work.
What, what happens when you turn somebody, uh, somebody does something and you turn them out? Do they go back from where they're coming?
Then they go break a law and then we have other issues.
They go back to whatever they were doing before they came to us. Good, bad or ugly, it's kind of like when you fire somebody there.
So, so there will be, you know, if you turn somebody out who's homeless, there's the potential they'll just be on the street in Yankton then?
Right. We, we can only do so much and we will, we immediately fill that spot with somebody else that is probably already on the street. It, it's not a good deal, but it's one of those, how do you?
Yep.
Do you save the many or do you save the one?
You, you got a tough job, there's, there's no doubt about it.
So, so when you mentioned earlier that the jobs that these people are capable of doing. Does not, uh, not a sufficient, generate a sufficient revenue so that they can move into a house or apartment for a family of four? What, what are you talking or what do you, what kind of job are they looking to get? And what kind of, do they, do they, do you, do you assist them on getting on like, uh, welfare, food stamps, anything like that to sub, some kind of subsidy?
Correct, most of them are by this point. We try and get them in a job, a lot of the manufacturing here. And the other side of that is if it's a two-parent household, if we can get both parents working. If we can teach them how to find quality childcare that's affordable, budgeting. We work a lot with Lutheran Social Services on budgeting. And I'm learning when you grow up with a family that has the history of homelessness and, and poverty, you don't know any different. Some of our participants think that sleeping in that night by night basement is the greatest thing ever. I'm not okay with that because people deserve more than that and I'm not a bleeding heart by any means. But you can come look at that basement with me, that's not a goal in life. We, we need to get them someplace where they're housed and.
And one of the benefits of the Boys and Girls Club is the, what I think to be extremely low annual cost. Which allows parents to leave their children there and then go out and actually work. Or when they get done with school, they can go there so the parents can continue to work.
One thing I would.
Because I know that from experience, I've had a number of defendants who are on the pathways waiting list to get in. And that's, they either go from jail to nowhere or jail to pathways. Because judge wants an address when she lets them out.
And, and just from the financial aspect, we have a grant this year and it'll be next year too, for three hundred thousand, just one grant that we're spending almost entirely in Yankton. We've got five full-time employees and fifteen part-time employees. So I like to think we're putting some money back in, not enough, but we're, we try and keep it local. I, I, I get it, it's, it's no fun.
Is there any limit to the, the night by night? Does, is somebody allowed to stay ten days or, or is there any limit?
Thirty nights and then they have to show vast improvement in their employment seeking with our case managers. And that is one of the first things I did when I came in. I'll tell you guys, I, I'm not speaking badly about Jesse Bailey because he built this thing, but no more. We, we've got to start enforcing these rules and we've got to start getting people to work and we've got to start getting them home. We can't just be a come hang out with us and I think that's what you're asking.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to see that because that's, that's the concern I've heard from many, many people. Through the community that it, it just got to be too much.
Yeah, and if you guys have questions, have people come talk to me, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It's a mess, we're going to get better. Our facility's getting cleaned up as we speak. Got an Eagle Scout that's going to come in and put down turf and put up a big playground for the kids. Is that a big thing? No, but those kids deserve someplace safe to play.
Well, and, and another thing with the current, um, diversion program. One of the diversion. Goals, if you will, is that part of the, if you're placed on either youth diversion or young adult diversion. That they make you do community service. And one of the places that they send people are pathways. Because I've sent two people to pathways in the last two weeks. And so they help out so they don't have wages to be paid. But, you know, the, the offset of that is the person who could otherwise have a criminal record. No longer will have that opportunity to have a criminal record and will do some, something good for the county, which. And the community, which we know from my track record on naughty children, there are too many.
And I would just, but I know I'm taking up too much time. The last thing I'd say is if you guys have questions, send some, somebody has questions, have them come talk to me and we'll just talk about it. I'm not scared to sit in my office or show people around.
Is that your phone number, the six four four?
No, it's somebody else's.
That's yours?
I will give you my, my cell phone number before I leave.
You're right, it is somebody else's.
No, it's his, but you want his private number?
It's a direct call in, but yeah, guys, send them to me, we'll talk. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll email the auditor.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you, thanks guys.
Yeah, I wouldn't put my cell phone number on here either, don't turn that off. The next person, turn it back on, the next person won't have that, will have that same issue you had, there you go.
There you go.
Thank, thank you for, uh, your changes and your intention to make it work better.
Okay.
Soil conservation.
Do you, do we want to do transit? That's, she's been here since the beginning.
Soil conservation is not here, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm right here.
She's, she's hiding. Well, why don't we do her quick and then Kramer, then transit and then.
Yes.
I don't know, Kramer Kenyon's here.
Two o'clock.
You're Kramer Kenyon? I would not have recognized that.
Hi. Hello.
Hi.
All right, what are we doing? This is Rayan's first time.
Yep, so you explain to us what you need to fund your, or if you're going to leave your budget the same.
I guess I don't have my paper with me. Um, uh, Rob helped me kind of go through that and we just did the four point two. We just did the four point two percent, uh.
Increase.
Increase. Um, the, I think I have a thousand dollars for travel. Um, I have, well, I had the meeting in Chamberlain last month. I've got a meeting in Mitchell at the end of the month. September, there's Watertown. Um, I think there's one in November in Montana. I don't necessarily know if I like have to go to that one. But, um, so there's, you know, um, we have our credit card, or my debit card from First, uh, National Bank. Um, but, you know, we pay bills to that and that's, you know, um, that account. So, um, we, um. So I'll have gas for driving there and hotels. So the hotel for September, there's a lottery on that through the S D A C D. Um, so I don't know if they'll, if I'll get into that. Um, I also need to find out from my board members who's coming and who's not. Um.
I think that's, that's good, it's a straightforward one.
You know, Rayan too, we usually have drug billing on the motel. So just let, where you stay, just let them know and then if I have to give you something.
Oh, okay, sure, that's great. Okay, do you think anything else? All right, have a good day, guys.
If you have any questions?
Oh.
No, I think she does great.
Yep.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
I had one question, grounds maintenance?
Um, so we pay Jim Plavik. Um, we up to their wedges, so I have Mike, uh, Vibornee and I have Jim Plavik who help us do.
Like mowing?
Um, well, they help me do the plantings and Jim is the one who does the mowing. And I don't know if he does the snow removal, but I pay him a wage to do all the mowing during the spring and summer.
And, and that's out at the, that is the building out there?
That's on the, yep, yep.
Could you do that cheaper, Jeff, or not?
Have, have you heard any more about the sheriff's department and the police department was going to put a fence out there?
That's still up in the air.
Yeah.
They've been working, they've been, they've been looking at other thi- they've been too busy with other things, they've been really looking for a grant.
I just know they were looking for grants to build a fence around that property.
But they haven't really made progress on that.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't believe we need it. I didn't have any plants stolen from me this year. Granted, I didn't buy the way Sarah did last year and before. Um, we ended with like a hundred and fifty trees. Whereas I know Jody from Charles Mix said that she threw away a thousand trees. So I don't know if I just didn't buy enough or honestly, it worked out perfectly. Because we just had very little trees to, uh, take care of, so.
Yeah, I, I think you were much more efficient this year on the tree purchases.
I think so too. So, um, you wanted trees.
I did want trees.
So come to me mid-October. I should have the pre-order sheets ready to go mid-October.
Okay.
And anybody else who needs trees, um, they'll either be in the newspaper, at my office or online on our website. So.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, have a good day, guys.
You too.
Okay, now let's sneak in the transit.
This is, this is under commission, right, this one?
Yeah, so I'll introduce myself a little bit, I'm newer to the, my role. My name's Lacey, I'm the new operations supervisor for the transit. And then I've, Terry Kirchner was, um, our previous one. We've now let him stroll into the shop and he now works on buses for us, so. Um, but I'm here just on our request for our five thousand dollars. Um, we are. We deal with a lot of Fed money and Fed money is always changing, like every, you guys deal with obviously too, but, um. They've restructured it again. And our, they're pulling our maintenance funds and stuff like that. We are having to pull a lot more out of our operating expenses, like, um, out of a different fund than we used to have to. So that's limiting, um, the money that we can help subsidize our rates for fares. We are currently at two fifty within city limits and then it's per mile after that.
How much per mile?
Um, it's roughly about twenty, twenty-five cents to fifty cents a mile. So to, just for, from Sid Street out by the lake, it's four seventy, or excuse me, yep, four seventy-five to get from here to in town. We, and it's per city limits. So once they hit city limits and say they work on the other side of town, they're paying to have to go onto the other side of town as well. Um, so we have people that live out by the lake because after the last simple, um, employment poll that they did, there was no housing. So everybody was living out in the trailer parks down by Sid area. Um, they're paying eight dollars and eighty, eight dollars and seventy-five cents one way to get into town and then on the way back. Um, but without your guys' funds and the help of your guys, well, the help of everybody, but your guys' funds as well, it helps subsidize that. Because it's actually roughly about twenty to twenty-five dollars a ride. When you factor in all of our, uh, maintenance costs, insurance and everything, when you do all that kind of stuff. So that helps push those, uh, rates down. Also, um, whether you've seen it in a few papers, we've also actually just merged with Vermillion Public Transit. This money is only for Yankton County, but we are actually, with doing that, we will be able to service a little bit more of that gap between here and Vermillion, which is Yankton County. So we're getting residents that are stuck in their home out in the country to get them back here in town for medical services. Um, and that kind of helps them pay for those things. We do have a bunch of other agencies, agencies we work with. We have contracts with Avera. Um, Avera, Horizon, The Clinic. Um, we do submit to Medicaid, so that kind of helps too. But a lot of those people out in those homes don't have Medicaid because they're in their own, they obviously have the income to not be able to do that. So those people are paying out of pocket and still for them, it's roughly about. To get them back home, our round trip is roughly about twenty to twenty-five dollars for them. Not that bad, but it's, it's a lot better than doing a taxi. Because here in town, a taxi just to travel in town is twelve dollars one way. So for us to be able to offer that service to go get them, plus our ADA vans and buses. We, for people with disabilities or anything like that, we offer those services to them. Um, and that's going out of town as well or taking them to Sioux Falls. But we just, we sit there and wait, we have a bus available for them so that they aren't waiting for all day for a bus to come back. Or a relative to come get them to take them back home. So these funds really do help, um, eliminate those costs for our customers and your guys', all the residents in Yankton County, so, yes.
What's the difference between you and this Rock's transit?
Um, not a whole lot. They, um, they function a little bit more outside, excuse me, outside of the Yankton. They service Yankton County, but they're based out of Wagner, so they kind of do everything else. They do a little bit.
Like bring Wagner people to here?
Yes, yes.
For what purpose?
To go to pathways.
Well, it's one way.
I've seen them, I've seen them at Walmart. I've seen, I don't see them a lot other places, but I've seen them at Walmart. I know they do that.
They're federally funded too.
Yeah, they're, it's about the same as us, yeah. Um, they have garages all over, so we're kind of home-based here in Yankton. They have several garages, they have Wagner, Centerville, Viborg, Beersford. And it's just tiny little garages everywhere.
You don't, you're not speaking for them or anything, this is, if they're not going on comment.
That's something else.
No, that's, that's why I asked.
Yeah, but yeah, it's something different, but yeah, they, um, they don't, we kind of have a verbal agreement. They don't come here.
And you don't go to a. And you don't go to Wagner?
And we don't go there. But we're based here, so we don't go to Wagner and pick somebody up and bring them back here. That's not how we work. We are based out of here. We have to, we don't crest in anybody else's territory unless they can't do it, and then they tell us and we try to work something out. And that's been with our merger with Vermillion too. It's just bringing, also with employment rights too, we're gonna be able to have people that can't live here because of housing issues, that are living in Vermillion. We can be bringing them in to work and taking them back. That's in our future plans. That's not within maybe the next year, but that's very much what we're goal is too, is to help kind of help the labor force a little bit too here in town.
I think you do a great job and the transit's money well spent, so.
Yes, I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Patty, these people aren't planning on coming, then if they don't, not gonna come here, I don't think I'm gonna wanna.
And we don't, we've never paid them.
If they're based out of Wagner, that's, that's, their colleagues can pay for that.
So, how do you really feel about that, Dan?
Well, they, they probably bring people from Wagner to our homeless shelter weekly, from what it sounds like.
Next.
Kramer Canyon, Justin.
We're only seven minutes behind.
Justin, how you doing?
Um, well, last year you guys gave us two thousand dollars, which we greatly appreciate. I would like to ask the same amount for this year. Last year, you guys were, asked us to use it for promotion costs, which we did. We advertised all through the state of South Dakota and our attendance had, has gone up, probably upwards of twenty-five to thirty percent in the last year. And we're looking at, we've been kind of slightly collaborating with, with the MEED slightly, and they're helping us out with, between anything from grant writing to, we're, we're trading tickets for coupons to try to get more, more viewing for us.
Are you guys still doing the, like, the murder mystery kind of thing?
Yes, we are.
Can you do more of them? I miss everyone's.
Well, maybe you should tell them when you're available and they can schedule around you.
Could be.
But I, I guess this year I'm just asking for the status quo, if, if you guys would like to grant that.
Okay. Any other questions? I really do want to go to one of them, but I gotta find the time.
They're fun.
They are.
I'm sure.
I enjoy it. I get stuck in the kitchen doing dishes.
At least you're not the butler then.
No, no, no. This last dinner, I, I farmed out my stepson for that.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
No problem.
You see you.
Thank you, guys.
Why do I keep burying my schedule?
Ambulance Eric.
Why don't we do the government center, because I bet that's gonna be shorter.
Okay.
Almost can guarantee it.
Jeff, is government center and safety center?
Safety center, yes, yep. I just did as I was told with everything and, and as far as, like, the utilities and things like that, obviously, I mean, that's pretty up in the air, but in all honesty, in this building, it, they should actually, the utility should be dropping with the new chiller and all the LED light conversions, and then again, also the LED light conversions over at the safety center.
Sure.
So, but again, with the heat, the way it is over there, we try to keep the chillers as clean as they ca, as we can to make them as efficient as possible, but with, with a hundred and five, hundred and six degrees, you know, everything just cooks, so we have to have, obviously, air conditioning and things like that, so.
Are, are the chillers over at that building in kind of the same situation as we were here?
I would say the larger one over there at the safety center is probably the weakest, because of its, it's so large. And one of the issues over there also is not so much the chiller itself, as it is the, the coolers, the coils inside. The drain pans are to the point where within the next, I'm gonna say ten years max, and they're gonna be rusted out. And they're not, they're not efficient, they're not dropping the evaporative like we do over here. They're not condensing the moisture and dropping it out, so that building is very humid over there all the time. But, but again, you know, with, with different things that we have to, that we're looking at, you know, with the, with the old elevator over there and things like that, it's, it's kind of a.
That's elevator, there are no parts available.
Right, right. You know, which, which one do we take care of first? And again, that's why we talked the last time about putting, I know we have a, the, the eighty thousand every year put away, but we, we really need to start putting away, and I'm gonna say major chunks, maybe a hundred thousand dollars extra a year somewhere to sit, to say, okay, in three years, we need to do these air handlers. In four years, we need to do this elevator, because when they quit, there, it's not gonna be fun.
And speaking with Jeff is, yeah, these buildings are all coming up on twenty-plus years and stuff is starting to bring.
There's, there's portions of that building that are fifty-plus years old.
Yeah, you know, we, we've had to replace those, especially in the jail, it's water heaters. It's not as simple as going to Menards and getting it. I mean, they can be months on back order and very expensive when they do break. So, I would, I would.
But yeah, like I said, as far as budget-wise, like I said, I tried to keep everything in line, made some minor increases, obviously. I mean, that's just the, the name of the game all the time. Nothing major. And, you know, at some point, and we talked about that, it would be really nice to try to get someone as a part-time position, just to help, especially in the summertime, with the lawns and things like that.
Good.
Jeff, question for, I put you on the spot, but I guess we're hiring out the mowing over at the soil conservation. Is that something that, you, do you have the time to bring that in-house or not?
I guess I've never really stopped over there and taken any kind of a look at it. I mean, I can.
It's, it's really not that big. I, I don't want to add more to your burden.
Well, I, I have a question. Can you use any of the trust, the jails, jail people as trustees? Because I know that, I had a client, actually. This, talked and called her this morning. She's in the Charles Mix County Jail. She's outside mowing the lawn, so she couldn't talk to me. So, and they don't pay her.
Right.
So, aren't there some of the lesser criminal defendants that you could maybe use?
I can look into that, but, I can look into some of that, but some, sometimes then you have to have someone there monitoring them. And it's like, well, okay, so they're mon, what are they doing while they're monitoring, while they're standing there watching them?
I, I guess.
So, let's just have our employee do it and then there's no liability issues and then we can get it done and move on.
And just be done, yeah. I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a really quick question, just, it's probably more friendly. So, we have some infrastructure problems on the terms of internet here in this building. Would that be in this budget or, that's gonna be in that data budget as well? Just to have it clear. Because I think on like the safety center, that's put into that budget, improvement to networks over there.
Well, usually they're, I think it's probably in the safety center building, like if they need work done or anything. Other than that, it'll go into the building fund, if it's, if it's a, a big amount.
Major amount, yeah.
Okay.
But anything, yeah, it, um, the only thing that really comes out of the debit card is the big, you know, the big expenditures like.
A chiller.
No, not that other data.
I don't know what they're called.
Air conditioner.
Something like that.
Server stuff.
Because we have a server here that needs to be replaced. We have a firewall that, in this building that needs to be replaced.
See, that'll come out of data.
Okay, so that's gonna come out of data. That's why I wanted to make sure, like, that's not in this budget, that's in that.
Correct, yes, that's, that would be separate. Yeah, yeah.
If they, if he needs work, like on his computer, that comes out of his, like, just like mine, if, you know, I bought computers, that comes out of my budget, or if we need repair, that, that stuff comes out of the budgets.
Right.
Okay.
And in regards to the chiller, they were here Monday and Tuesday and got the new compressors put in and everything's functioning a hundred percent again, so. And everything was under warranty.
Back in the day, did those, they call those air conditioners?
No, there's, there's, actually.
They're always chillers?
This was, I, yes, because this just cools the water down in the lines, so, yeah, yeah.
Good.
I'd just like to just say a little bit about Jeff. You know, he's here. He gets calls on weekends, holidays, comes in and he takes care of it. And you're, you and your crew, I think, do a great job. The building always looks great and I'd just like to say thanks.
No problem.
You, you have a lot of dedication and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Hello? Good afternoon. I will try not to take a whole lot of your time. This being my first time, I'll just be curious to see how this all plays out. So, the budget that we kind of shot for, for 2025, we want the four point two percent increase. That was about it. As you can see, under personal services, it actually averaged a point, or four point zero three percent. Under personal, personnel services, that seems to be our largest item and it's just keeping people gainfully employed. Within that budget though, we actually have a slight buffer in case we have the opportunity to hire another paramedic, another full-time paramedic, that's built into that. So, even if we hire somebody else, it should keep us within lines of that. Under operating expenses, we increased just a little bit for insurance. I increased just a little bit for supplies, because we've all seen with everything else going up, we're expecting the supplies to go up a little bit. And then I also increased us, I went up by a thousand bucks for travel, and the reason being is Maria Cameron, who has been brought over to our agency from a previous office, I need to send her to a certified billing course for EMS. They have specific courses for that. The plan is to take her to Pier, Fort Pier, February, because they actually offer the course there every year. It's, and it's during an E, or an ambulance association conference, which I typically attend as well. So, I'd like to send her to that. Under tangible goods, we kind of got rid of the furnitures and minor equipment, but I did slide it down to other. The reason being is we're hoping to look at a, another quick response vehicle. One of our quick response vehicles, a two thousand and six Chevy, the heater's not always working in the winter and we kind of use it to move snow and stuff, but we can move the plow from that device over to our other vehicle and then replace the seven nine six. And then if Jeff or anybody would have use for that particular pickup, we can see where it goes from there. But all we basically did was increase our budget by four point two percent, and we're gonna let it ride at that and see if you have any questions, comments, or suggestions.
Do you have a?
Well, mine has a yellow sticky over it, so I can't see what the.
Do you have a, one that doesn't have this on, because it blocks the last three years?
The information, yeah.
Can we get a copy? Who, who all wants a copy?
Everybody has a yellow one.
Sorry about that.
I'm sure it was on accident.
You know, without looking at the sheet, I think we increased our budget by about sixty or sixty-three thousand dollars over last year, was it?
I have a really quick, so, the travel, you were talking about the certification, is that, is there like, is that edu, is there like fees for that certification class?
Repeat your question.
Fees for that certification class, like you have to pay for that class?
They gotta pay registration for the conference.
Okay.
That's basically the fee for it.
All right, and you're adding that into the travel?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It's just one of those things I like to see, like, we have employees, I like to see them getting out, getting the education, getting to these conferences and I like to see some of that, you know, some of that improvement for our employees as well.
And I wanted to be just fair on that. I truly, coming from an educational background, I believe in, you know, expanding those realms, and we've never truly utilized all of our education budget, but I wanted to make sure we had that opportunity there, so that's why I increased it. If I can still stick around that twenty-five hundred, we'll do so, but.
And then that, you, you're also asking for the county accumulation of another fifty thousand. That's a, that's an additional to that for the ambulance replacement.
Yeah.
Didn't we just buy an ambulance, like, two years ago?
A new box, I think.
No, it was a new chassis.
We got a new chassis with a refurbished box. To do that's gonna run you about a hundred, I think the last one was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, we plan on doing one about every four to five years, and so as we just set that money aside, we can't put it in a line item on our budget, because if we do at the end of the year, we lose it basically. And so Patty puts it into a side fund and it just accumulates for when we need to move on a new ambulance.
And personally, I think just about every department should have a capital expenditure fund set up, scheduled.
You've never mentioned that before, Dan.
I have to.
Would, would it be better to do that though, or would it be better just when you need it to budget for it?
I, I think it should be a budgeted number every year, every one, and it, and that way it can be a smaller number for, or whatever, but.
We don't, I don't.
Just like the, the chiller in this place, if we'd have a capital expenditure fund set up, there'd be no, no issue, just put it in and write out the check and pay for it and get it done.
And I agree with you here, because I think.
Two million short. Well, then you, then, then you don't add it to that cap, then you don't, then it doesn't go into that fund. At, at church, we have, we have, we had it set up for, at ten thousand dollars a year, you put it in, and, you know, when, what, when was that, nineteen or whenever, when we had the ice storm and the, and the icicles broke off of the east fountain, or off of the, slid down off of the tin roof and poked a hole in the rubber thing in the liner on the roof. It'd come in pretty damn handy when you gotta replace a whole roof. And the insurance don't pay for it, because you didn't have Eve Strauss originally built on the, that part of the roof.
We do have that four hundred thousand dollar contingency fund for emergencies. And I, and I get your point. I guess the other, the other point of that too is doing it that way and budgeting, you know, make sure you really need something. You, you know, that, that it's.
I get it. I said every department, but I, I mean, it's not every department needs to have a.
Probably these ones, probably the sheriff's department, highway, that, that would makes, you know.
I get, I, I could see both sides of that.
It's a tough pill from our standpoint to come back to you guys in a year from now and say, hey, we need two hundred thousand dollars for a new ambulance, because that throws the budget off. If we can build that in, it just lessens.
Yeah, and I, and I think also too, in all this effort we've been putting into researching and looking at the future of ambulance in our county, I think the only thing I gather from all of this is that the biggest weak spot we have in EMS is the fact that your building is old. And there is potentially, that's probably the, the one flag that sits out there, I think, and that's something else that we gotta think about in that, in building that fund a bit, is there's a chance that's, that's coming down the road.
Yeah.
You know, we did this with the jail, you know, we did that years ago for the jail. It's like, you know, that was forward-thinking. We also be, gotta be forward-thinking in other areas.
It would be, it would be nice to see a public service building, which you could actually look at, emergency management, EMS, even the sheriff's department, police department, and fire could occupy a little bit of space in it to see how that looks, but then that becomes a game changer of getting the city involved in, that's not my realm. That's up to you guys, so.
You know, to your, your point, that is, that's a conversation that has to be had, because a facility like we're talking about, you know, I, it's gonna be probably in the eight to ten million dollar range. And if we put away a, probably more, well, I'm talking today's money, but if that's the case and if we have to build it in probably no less than ten years, we should be putting a million bucks away a year on, on that. And how do we do that? When we got four million, we gotta come up with Stone Church Bridge and we're already two million dollars behind. It, it's, it's a tough decision, but that's a great point you bring up, to think about the future.
Yep.
Okay.
I was.
Thank you. You got a question?
I thought I was wrong. You're short today.
Yep.
Because they put down the screen for you.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought Troy was here.
Troy's on vacation this week, so I'm gonna keep this, I'm gonna try to keep this as short as I can for you. Troy's on vacation this week, so I'm gonna keep this, I'm gonna try to keep this as short as I can for you guys.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. Horn. I am wonderful.
Does he have one of the, a tab here?
No.
No.
No, he doesn't have a tab.
I just asked to get, get on the docket today because I know you have the budget that I talk about and there's gonna be some stuff coming up, so I wanted to just address you now before.
You have to remember, we have at-home viewers.
What's that?
You have to talk into the microphone, we have at-home viewers.
All right. So, uh, we are talking about my public defender contract as well as there's an open contract that Dan Fox no longer, since he retired, is no longer doing. So Lucy Youngberg has half the magistrate court contract and some other things, and then currently, there's nobody filling Dan's spot because he retired. And so I previously talked to the commission about my contract and the future of it. And so I'm putting together a proposal where we'd relieve those concerns as well as the concern where Dan Fox is no longer there covering his half of the magistrate court contract. And so with that, my hope is that we would put this up for like the second meeting in August, where we could address it then. But I wanted to put you on notice that we will be doing that and that'd be an increase in cost, so right now with the increase from, I think I'm just short of fourteen thousand on my contract, it would go up to a higher number and I can present that now or in August, when you want me to do that, so.
And, and just so the rest of the commissioners know, as a result of Dan Fox retiring and terminating his obligation to the county, the magistrate court judge has taken to rather than giving all the magistrate court appointments to the public defender's office, because that's not part of his current contract. What the magistrate judge has been doing is doling, this'll sound harsh, doling out the appointments to various law firms in town. Nikki Brandt does them, Berandy Gant does them, Tyler Mattson does them, I get a few. And as I've said numerous times before, criminals do not commit crimes in ones. They always seem to have to go in twos and threes. That way, if we add that magistrate court portion, if you will, to the current public defender contract, I think we can substantially cut down on, if you go back and look at the last four months of legal fees that have been paid out to the Kennedy Law Firm, to the Kolesky Law Firm, even to my law firm, or to, there's another one, who am I missing? Blackburn and Stevens. That money is, and again, this'll sound harsh, there are two of those attorneys don't, don't do a lot of criminal work, so it takes them a little bit longer to do that same work, which costs the county extra money. Obviously, the defendants are ordered to repay their court-appointed fees and, excuse me, and the judge typically puts in a le, a date to, date for each of those people to pay their court-appointed fees through the Yankton County Auditor. But as we've heard from Brian Hunoff, that has not been happening. And absent some kind of punishment for failure to pay, I don't think that's gonna start happening, unfortunately. And I think this proposal would alleviate a good share of that issue.
Just to add to that, Jody from the clerk courts office did some numbers for us and so from the time that Dan and Lucy got, were sick, and Lucy has now come back to work, so there's a, just a shorter period for her, but since that time, there were a hundred and seventy-one cases that were doled out to other law firms during that time period. And that's gonna continue to happen up until either we rewrite the contract next June, when my, my three years is up on my contract, or if we do it now, we can relieve that concern now and then I believe between Lucy's office, or Lucy, and my office, because I have two attorneys in my office, that we can take care of that problem. And so basically, I'm putting a proposal together that relieves my concerns on my contract, but also helps the county to take care of that. And along with that, I'm talking about the half of the magistrate court, all the, the circuit court, other than conflicts. I would also pick up the juvenile court appointments that previously were not done. Alcohol committals, which is just a couple hearings a year, or a couple cases a year. We would still take on all the MIs that is Yankton, they're Yankton people and so on. And so I believe that this really resolves concerns that both the county have and that my firm has.
And if Garrett's office has half, and Lucy's office has half, that takes care of my, my continuing concern as to the conflict issue, because I know in the past when Dan and Lucy had the contract, they wanted a substantial raise so they could hire another attorney, but that did not fix the conflict problem.
Right. Do you have an estimate on how much the cost will go up? Do you have those numbers yet, or is that some?
All right. So that's a work in progress. The last time we talked, we were trying to put that together and I talked with Jody at the clerk courts. She has done basically as much as she can to.
I don't think he has a final number yet.
I do not, just because it's hard to calculate and the records that she has aren't completely clear yet.
But I did think it was important that he came so that commission knew that he would be asking for an increase, so we could think about it in terms of our budget.
Do we wanna, and this is probably more for you, Patty, do we?
I'm sorry, what did?
Do we want another, or do we currently have a, a public defender line item that we have? And okay. Is it in, is it in this book?
It's in, it's in court.
Oh, it's in court, okay.
The court budget. Should be in other.
It, it would be nice to have the projection as we consider the budget. But. But if we can provide better services to our citizens, we ought to consider it whether it's at budget time or four months after budget time. So, I would like to see you do it now, if we can get it in. If not, we'll do it in three months.
Well, he said he's planning on coming the second week in August, so.
And today, I'm just proposing that we put it on and I, I think that in talks earlier, it'd be best if it was as soon as possible, but the second week of August, I would have all my, everything I can get together, together.
Yeah.
And so, and I have a number that I've planned out and
Is that under professional services?
I'm ready to go anytime, but
Yes.
I do believe that we could provide a better service to the county right now, if we do it this way.
And, and one thing to point out that they would be doing the ANNs, which would be good, or one half of the ANNs, Lucy would get one half. An, ANN is an abuse in a case, okay? Lucy Youngberg would be doing one half, like mom, for example. Garrett's office would be doing dad, unless there were multiple fathers, which occasionally there are. But Heather LaCroix almost is always appointed to represent the children, so we'll still see a line item for the LaCroix Law Office, cause we can't change that.
So the budget that we have requested for the court services is five hundred and twenty-five thousand and for the professional services, which include all the attorneys, is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, that, that's not including?
The increase?
Well, that's including a lot of things.
That's all the attorneys.
So, I think he needs time to crunch his numbers.
Yes, that's, that includes.
I guess what we're saying is like, we're, we're expecting an increase of that number.
Sorry, but.
This, this is gonna be what, if we can, if you can, if we continue to pay you like we are now and the other services, that's gonna be the five twenty-five.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be probably more than that.
Right, this is, that's not in, this number's not including the raise that you would request.
Okay. So what I, the way I look at it, and looking at it as a raise on my part, but my, my position is.
It's a transfer of money from multiple other law firms to some, to his law firm.
So when Dan Fox is making his salary, you know, per month, that was a set amount. When he retired or he stepped down, then those cases went out to others. Now, that's billed at a hundred and, I think it's seven dollars, ten dollars.
Hundred and fifteen dollars.
Hundred and fifteen dollars. So it's a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour and so depending on how experienced you are, how, whatever you are, then they're gonna charge that. On felony cases, it could be a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, depending on what the case is. In magistrate court cases, it's gonna be less. But as far, when I go into court for them, if I'm on contract, I mean, I put down the time that I'm spending in court, the time that I meet with them, that's supposed to be recouped to you. A lot of times it isn't, but it's supposed to be, but I'm at a set rate, so I'm gonna cut rate. I'm not charging hourly. I can't just sit on the file for five hours and charge six hundred bucks. I can't do that. I'm gonna put my time in the case and work at the best I can, but, sorry, but that's, that's it. That's where you save the money. And so you know in the budget what you're gonna pay me every year. Right. So.
And that total for the court system, that's, that's not just Garrett's.
No, it's not just them, no.
Any, any attorney.
Yeah.
That we pay.
Yeah, we're trying to.
Project.
We're trying to work within our budget, get the best possible representation for the indigent people that we are statutorily and constitutionally required to provide, yet not break the back of the county.
And I, and I'm, I'm fine with all of this, I guess, if, if we just had a number that we know, cause after this is done, we're gonna have to really start crunching some numbers and unfortunately, it's looking like we're gonna have to start cutting some places. And that's why we just kinda wanted to know roughly, hey, where are we gonna be at? Cause you, you know, yours is the last one, we know everything and we gotta add up all of these, see what they add, and then we have to look at our income that are coming in and then that's where we gotta start making.
And on the other hand, we just had somebody request fifty thousand dollars to put away for some ambulance. An ambulance, unfortunately, is not required, but legal representation is.
You're exactly right, and that, that's the request. Just because they request that, that doesn't.
I get it. I understand. But I understand what we have to do.
I'll do the best I can to try to give a projection of how much money is saved by allowing me to take on that half of the, the contract and so on. It's difficult because I don't know if you dole it out to other attorneys, how much they're charging on individual case. I know it's gonna be more than I would, you'd pay me per client to do so. But we do have the numbers from the county on the cases we had last year. I mean, there was a thousand cases in Yankton County, more than a thousand cases in Yankton County that were, that were to the level that, that needed attorneys or would be court-appointed there all that way. Yankton County's, the crime, the crime is going up. So I will do the best I can to get the numbers together by the second week of August and I'll, I'll give you a kind of a heads up on what we have and.
I think maybe Patty could tell us year-to-date what other attorney, like, she's hating me right now. What everybody other than, what other, everybody other than the LaCroix Law Office and Garrett have charged the county. It should just be an add up the months. Shouldn't be that hard. I'm not asking you to pull out the things, we're just gonna make Cassie do it. I'll volunteer, Cassie.
If you could get, yeah, if you were able to get that together sooner, you could probably email it to Wanda or something too, that'd be, that'd be helpful, but I know that takes time and I appreciate you being willing to take that on, cause it's a, it's a big part of the budget there, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with me?
Nope.
Thank you.
May I be excused?
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Eric.
Go back to court.
Do we wanna take some time and either go through these or other ones and discuss any of these? I guess, me personally, with the, the pathway shelter, I appreciate what that guy's doing, but I, I can't justify a doubling the amount that we give them, especially, you know, when, in his own words, we're importing a lot of people from the Wagner area and.
Although i- if it's true that he's putting them to work and we have employers that want people, that's good.
And I, you know what, you would think that if, if the employers want this so much, what's, what's a twenty thousand dollar check to these big employers? I, I have, I have an issue spending county property taxes to help homeless people from Charles Mix. I, I have an issue with that. I've heard from many, many.
Well, how about people from another nation?
I, I have an issue with that too. I, I guess, it, like I said, if you build it, it, it will come. I've heard from so many people and citizens that the, the homeless situation is, is out of control in the county right now and particularly Yankton and are we gonna double it again? I'm fine with contributing something, but I certainly don't think it should be twenty thousand dollars. If you guys think different, then I guess could make that motion to do that, but.
So are we gonna have a meeting where we just go through all of the money requests?
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to go home now with what we have.
And, and look at it.
And look at it. The only numbers, the only numbers that we really can't change is the, is the wages. I mean, salaries are pretty much.
We can't change that, we also can't change income.
No, I, I understand that. Income, income may change depending on, not this year anymore, but we're looking at next year, so depending on the building that's going on in the county, the income may increase. I know, it's not gonna be a lot.
What?
No.
Without any building, without any new improvements and any, any new taxes coming, or new taxable properties coming in, we can only increase our budget by what?
Three percent CPI, whichever's less, whichever is less.
Well, whatever CPI is in the growth.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's, that's the, that's our first cap, you know, and then you have whatever new building that we have, that could, that adds to our tax.
And unless it's TIFT, or uses discretionary formula, which pretty much all the new construction is gonna be utilizing.
And so, you know, and that's, and that's what it is, and so.
I, I think we, we could take what we, what we got from property taxes last year, do a moderate three percent or CPI to project what we're gonna get. Then we take all our fees, the wheel taxes and all that.
We should correct that, that it's not what we will get, what we can spend.
Well, wha- what we're gonna take in
Yeah, that's the most we can take in.
At, at the most, yeah.
Because if we, if we can cut the budget and, and only increase our budget by one percent, that just means less tax, property taxes on people, so.
But the, the rea- reality is what I think we're gonna find, is we're gonna take the property taxes we collect and we're gonna take the fees that we generate and, and that number's here, then we're gonna look at our budget here and what we're projected to spend is probably gonna be several million dollars higher than this. I mean, that's, that's what Don was talking about earlier and that's a problem. And, and the way the, the state does it, they look at it different there, cause money's constantly coming in. So you can pay those bills, but that's something we're gonna have to look at.
And when they need more, they have a way of getting it, we don't.
And then, and that's where I absolutely agree with you. Then you just look at like, okay, pathway shelter, we don't have to give them twenty thousand, we start cutting that stuff.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yeah.
We don't have to wait?
We don't have to give them the twenty thousand.
We don't, I, I get that.
Yeah, we don't have, we're not, we're not required to.
We're not required to give it to any of these people.
Exactly. Well, some, some cases were required to spend.
Well, yeah, but.
And, and what we gotta do to.
And pathways is not, there's a lot more of them that are requesting things that we don't have to give.
We, we've, we're gonna have to put some money away for that Stone Church Bridge too, because that bill is gonna come due.
How many people actually drive across that bridge? Do we, have we ever done a mileage or a car count?
There is a study out there on that. It's, it's one of the lower-use bridges, but we have a, a really good federal grant for it. I think it would be foolish not to take advantage of.
I, I agree. I'm just curious.
But our cost is gonna be four, four million dollars and we can come up with that in one year or put some money away every year.
There, there's a very good chance that we're going to, are we off the air?
No.
We're still in the meeting.
Don't turn your thing off.
There's a very good chance that we can get a, we could still apply for the big grant for our share of that cost.
Which would be fabulous.
Which would be, we, then we'd only be on the hook for twenty percent of our.
Eight zillion dollars.
So twenty percent of what like.
Of the four million. Or eight, whatever the, you know, what our, our cost.
That's, that's still, probably around a million bucks.
Yeah, but still, a million beats four million.
Yeah, I, I.
Unless I'm receiving it.
I agree with you, but the way that, that bridge improvement grant process. I agree with you, but the way that that bridge improvement grant process has, has worked in the past, I don't think we should, I don't think we should bank on that.
We can't count on it, but you can't win if you don't play, so we're gonna put in a, an application.
You're pretty quiet, Don, what do you, what do you got? Let's, let's get some wisdom from you.
As a former banker-
I understand, uh, I understand exactly what Dan's saying, and I understand what Wanda's saying. It's, it's, uh, to me, it's an issue of, uh, taking accountability for your financial, uh, situation and, uh-
So, well, we were-
If we can't afford to, to put four million dollars into it, uh, we oughtn't do it. And if we can get some grants and get it down less, we should do it. That, for having four bridges across the Jim River is in Yankton County here, we can't afford that.
Excessive.
Well, that's, that's the case where you have to start looking, that's the case where you have to start looking at your road system as a general and say, where can we cut, which bridge goes, which-
Oh, I get it.
What's the, what are the really required corridors to maintain a transportation system for our citizens?
There was a, there was a study done, a corridor system done, uh, were you here when that, when we did that, that corridor one?
Yeah.
You, you get that one, you could look it out, it was like the main transportation corridors. There's, there was one, it's probably twenty twenties.
East eighty-one and a half one west eighty-one.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, I mean, that's probably, and I know you've said it before, should have, those are the oil roads and everything else.
Mr. Heine?
Yeah. Not aware. Do we have a total, uh, do we have a total of what the budget request is? Do, does it, did anybody total that up yet?
We lost three million here.
I know, you'd have probably-
So, then we actually lost, we did lose-
I was at one of those sheets.
We have a budget to cash transfer, 'cause we know we're not gonna make enough, so that's what that, that's what that is.
So that brings that back to only a hundred thousand dollars.
So if you look on this, uh, sheet-
New handout?
Mm-hmm.
This one?
Go ahead, John, use it.
This one?
This one, yes.
With the general fund?
Okay.
Uh, total, total revenue was ten million, total expenditures was a little over nine million. So we had an excess of one point million.
Where are you seeing that? What page are you on?
The last.
The last, very last page. So, we, we, so basically look at the general, this, this is the column that we would go by.
When you say which, this, you mean first column?
The very first column, the very first column.
Okay.
Far left.
So you're saying we have a million dollars too much?
Between the expenditures and the revenue.
Yeah.
That was from, from last, from last week.
The general, we had a surplus.
There's never really a surplus. So, so on ridges and roads, we're three million behind.
Which really doesn't tell us much of anything.
No. And that three million behind could be just something that's budgeted and not spent, or we haven't got the bills on it yet. 'Cause a lot of times, is that right? 'Cause a lot of times Mike won't submit bills until the end, yeah, if this is, if this is correct, or not?
No, that, down below that three million one hundred, that's budgeted cash transfer. That's what Mike needs to supplement his budget. That's what comes from the general fund.
A hundred and three?
So what, why are we-
Three million one hundred.
Why are we taking money out of the general fund to put into the highway fund, why would you just-
That's what we have to do.
'Cause they're out of money.
Because that's how we pay for roads and bridges that everybody seemed to want.
No, no, I'm just, I was asking why wouldn't we budget for that this time of year, and then spend what we budget instead of more than that?
'Cause we don't know.
Because if you, if, if you put it out there, they will spend it.
We don't know, when, when we sit and look at this, what, what, uh, our fiscal projection it really is gonna be.
I'm kinda throwing darts at the wall.
It basically, it does someone.
Yeah.
It's not, you don't have to do it all.
Yeah, it's, it, it's, you're our best guess.
That's what the budgets are.
And, and that's, and that's kind of the way the state's got it set up. If we can only increase our budget by three percent, no matter what, inflation is bigger than, is higher than three percent.
Well, for the last two years, it's been horrible.
Yes.
Well, yeah, look, look at what, fog oil and asphalt and truck chassis, they've all gone up seventy to a hundred percent, and taxes go up by three percent.
Look at concrete.
So, so we have to cut somewhere. From what? Unless, unless the department heads have already cut.
Or you keep borrowing it from past income.
Yeah.
From past income, and that, that goes down, and pretty soon you don't have any gas.
Then you don't, then you'd have, then, then you're out of gas.
Then you're out of gas.
Then, then the, the bill will show up, and there'll be no money to pay it.
And then that's the big bankruptcy.
And that's, that's where some of those smaller county like Walworth are, are dealing with is-
Have you ever looked at Walworth County, how much of Walworth County is in reservation land, tribal land?
Say what, is what?
I don't know.
What?
What was your question?
My question was how much of any of these counties that keep saying they're gonna, you know, are on the precipice of bankruptcy, how many of those counties, how much percentage of land in that county is tribal?
I know Mallett County, it's forty-some percent.
Because I know that with some of the casinos, when, anytime they get some money ahead, and anything's for sale, they buy it up and take it off the tax rolls. Buy it up, take, because they're taking their land back.
That's a good, a good point that you bring up is, you know, taking it off the tax rules, because in April, we get that four-page list of every nonprofit that-
Yeah.
All of those don't contribute a single cent, but most of them are also that come in, and not only did they not pay property taxes, then they ask us for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars more.
Well, I get it.
And they only come in during budgeting season.
And we got a request in front of us, we got a request in front of us for the same thing in Yankton County.
Maybe we should, we should look at that.
Well, well, I get that, I mean, and then those counties that are on the precipice of bankruptcy, they still have to maintain the roads within the sovereign nation.
Yep, now they do.
Which is concerning to me. I am thankful we don't have tribal land.
Well, we can't set, we can't solve that, that's our, the federal government has to solve that.
Well, they can't solve it either.
That would make it more realistic.
Having said that, I move to adjourn.
Are, we, we got anything else?
So I got a motion by Wanda.
Is there anything else we needed to discuss? You wanna kinda just, everybody review it, and then we'll have to, do we wanna set another meeting where we go through this stuff?
Yeah, Patty's got it.
Do we wanna do that now, before we adjourn or?
Whatever you guys want.
I didn't bring my calendar.
'Cause we, like I said, we have to approve at the second meeting in August.
Well, that's fine.
Over.
And if you, I mean, if you have a lot of changes, you know, I have to do those, and then write a report for you.
Would next week work for you guys, or, or not?
I didn't bring my calendar, I can call my office, but I can tell you that I'm all day on the next Friday.
I think it probably should be-
I'm in a suppression hearing with Tyler Larson.
I'll be out of town next week.
How about the second of August?
Uh, kinda what we do, and we certainly want you there, but if there's anything, I really want this changed, that's where it would be, 'cause otherwise we generally go with what's presented.
Right, no, no, I, I agree.
But I, I can adjust further to, Patty, you needed it when, second week in August?
The second meeting, end of August, right?
Then we're gonna, then we have to approve the provisional budget, 'cause I'll have to advertise in September.
So either this week or next week, that's our options, and if she's, if we're gonna give Patty time to make changes.
Well, next week I can only do Monday.
What day is that, what are you talking about?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
I can make that work.
And then, so then you're gone through that week, the rest of that week?
Through the rest of that week. I, I can also make Friday af- afternoon work.
I can't do Friday that week.
I can do Monday.
I can do Monday. You wanna do morning?
I'd really rather do like three o'clock in the afternoon and go till we're done.
About one again.
Monday, Monday I would not be able to go that late.
Okay.
Monday you what, Ryan?
Monday I'd ra- I'd need to go earlier than like-
What works, morning better for you, or, or morning, or early morning?
First thing afternoon, yeah, would be the best.
One o'clock, noon?
Can you look at my calendar and tell me what I'm doing Monday?
Yeah, like one o'clock would be the best for me.
Monday afternoon, noon, starting at noon.
Start at noon.
Twenty-nine? And then, what, if we could, yeah, we'll go through each one of the requests, I, if we could have, like, the total of the requests, however many million dollars, total of the revenue, and then, you know, added up, so we kinda know where we're at, I think that'd be helpful.
And that'll, that'll-
And I hear we have good news.
That's on there, that's on your, yeah, that's on her sheet.
Did she pick somebody else? Oh, that's funny.
So, speaking of spending money, we have firewall that we have to get replaced.
Well, that's fine, just bill her for it when she comes to pick it up.
It's no longer serviceable.
Were you gonna do a separate IT?
See, when she comes to pick it up, that's just fine, 'cause good luck to her, because Tim Bottom's gonna eat her lunch.
It's gonna be kind of taking over the data.
She's just gonna turn it from data to IT.
Right now that is, yeah. Right now our data sheet is blank, so I'll get that filled out and have Patty send that.
We'll probably need that, that, the, I mean-
Well, I wanna get that out there before Monday.
We'll need the adjustments, the adjustments.
Well, no, that's fine. I, I'm okay with it, because I can tell you that-
But also, I also was going to share this quote from RTI, um, and that's for improvements, that's for fixing or replacing the servers in the sheriff's office, plus the servers here, um, both of which are having issues staying running and rebooting. So they, it is overdue for them to go.
Yeah, um, I can do a substitution of counts.
Um, as well as this firewall that has to get replaced, it has to probably, we have to probably do that this year.
So you got a quote, you got a quote for us today, or no?
I do got a quote for those things, and the firewall will be probably the next meeting.
How much, how much is it gonna be, if it's over a certain amount, we gotta get bids, you know?
This is through, uh, state contract, so it's already bidded out.
Bid source?
Yeah, state source, so.
No, have, have Alina do it, 'cause I don't trust Chris, 'cause apparently yesterday she gave out attorney board projects.
Is it over fifty thousand?
Yes.
Then, then we, we may have to, uh-
So we can just box it up.
Do bids for that, I, I know that-
This is, this is a, this is where it's been already bidded through, so. And so, that's kinda the reason to do this, is so that we can-
To what we have. No.
If you look- Melissa has been on the walk-in over two years. For the general fund, seventeen, no.
Is that seventeen million, six hundred?
Listen to me.
Yeah, seventeen million, six hundred and seventeen.
I'm sorry, listen to the figure it gets.
Shut up for one minute. Go, go to Chris's computer, immediately to the lead to the left on the computer. Is the response to the request for production.
Total appropriations is sixteen, six seventy-two, that's expenditure.
Take that out. Have Paulina take a piece of colored paper and put it between every one of those piles that we set up on the budget table. So they don't have to go back, and I spent an hour going on there to answer those questions. Just put them together.
Yep, and then we get a break there, so there's net rent of finance is seventeen seventy-three.
And then everything else-
And this is off because I did add, because I had something.
So that my, you know, we got to the bar about how we're costing our estimate. That's what means it's a balanced budget by the state.
But that, yeah, okay, but I guess where I'm coming from is if we gotta replace that bridge, and we gotta start putting money away, that's gonna, that's gonna make that, you know, 'cause it's pretty close now, but if you add a million dollars to what we need to appropriate, then now we're, now we're in trouble. Four million dollars for the bridge, a million dollars for the new ambulance fund? Well, that's, that's why all cities got into trouble.
Did you wanna discuss that bid vote?
I just wanted to share with you guys, and we will have a, next meeting, we will have also a bid vote for that firewall to probably get approved, so.
Okay, so I have a motion by Wanda to adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
Ryan?
Ryan seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, propose same sign? Motion here. Up here, so twenty-ninth at noon. You're good with that, Wanda?
I'm good, twenty-ninth at noon.
Alright.
So, can you have any figures from the last, from daddy yet?
Ah, yeah, I can get those to you, and put those fine ones in there. That's, that's the quote actually, that we got, we do-